Call the meeting to order, is that okay now Brett? Roll call.
Brett?
Here.
Watson? Brett, can you unmute Mr. Watson? Mr. Watson?
I'm here.
Okay.
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Hanfelder?
Here.
So now we have the board action regarding seating of the student board member. Kevin, I believe that's your...
Yep, I have the oath of office here.
Do what?
Ashton, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So this is Ashton's oath of office as our student trustee. And I'll read it a little bit and then you repeat after me, okay?
Got it.
I, Ashton Brett.
I, Ashton Brett.
Having been duly elected...
Having been duly elected...
...to the office of member of the Board of Trustees.
Having been duly elected to the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Community College District.
Of Community College District.
Number 536.
Number 536.
Lewis and Clark Community College.
Lewis and Clark Community College.
Madison.
Madison.
McCupin.
McCupin.
Jersey.
Jersey.
Calhoun.
Calhoun.
Green.
Green.
Morgan.
Morgan.
And Scott Counties.
And Scott Counties.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Aforesaid...
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
...the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of member.
The duties of the office of member.
Of the Board of Trustees.
Of the Board of Trustees.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Now, I have a question for Sue. Will you take care of the paperwork as there's like a signature here?
Yes, I will do that.
Yeah, okay.
Welcome aboard, Ashton.
Welcome to the board.
Yeah. Welcome aboard, Ashton.
Glad to join.
Okay, now it's time for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, it's come to my attention since the board was able to post its agenda for the meeting tonight, there's a couple of personnel matters requiring an executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, or discipline of employees of the public body. I would propose that we have one of these executive sessions immediately following item four on the agenda, public comment. And so is not to delay the meeting for a unduly long executive session, to have a second executive session following the action items at item number eight on the agenda. So to split the matters up into two executive sessions so as not to delay the meeting. I don't believe there's any action to be taken following the second executive session. So the board would come out of executive session and then adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Sue, do we have any public comments?
No.
We would need a motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's no public comments, but we need a motion on...
Yeah, I know.
...the agenda.
Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session. Oh, we want one to amend the agenda first, okay. Motion to amend the agenda first. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Well, we have public comment, don't we?
She said there was no public comment.
Okay.
So we need a motion to adjourn to executive session. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Brett? Take us away.
Let me get you moved here. And I am assuming we need Gabe in this session as well?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, that's what I thought. Let's... Sure, get everybody here. I'm gonna start sending you over and make sure that I get everybody where they're supposed to be, just a moment. All right. Lori, where are you at? Dennis, you should have an invite to join now. Julie, I'm working on you. You should have your invite. All right, general public members, I'm gonna go check on the members to make sure everything's fine. I have no idea how long this is gonna last, but hopefully shortly, and we'll be back with you.
And just so board members are aware, you all came back in muted.
Brett, did you see the message? I think there's still a few people in the waiting room who need to be pushed over.
Thank you.
Let me know when we're all in the...
There's a few more, few more of the public coming in, but all of the board members are back.
Okay, we call the meeting too harder. Need roll call again?
Okay, Britt?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust? Yep. Rust?
Oh.
Okay. Handfelder?
Here.
Okay. 7:45.
Item five, omnibus agenda. The following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote. Anyone wishing to pull any item? If not, we need a motion to approve the omnibus agenda.
Motion.
Motion made. Is your second?
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Britt?
Here.
This is an approve. Is that okay?
I'm sorry.
Wertz?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Here.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay, now we have item six, information.
Chairman Hyon?
Yes?
Chairman Hyon, I would like to say something before we move forward. I see that Dr. Linda Chapman is leaving us as of June 30th, and I would like to acknowledge and recognize her for her outstanding job she has done over the past 30 years. Thank you, Dr. Chapman.
Any other comments?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you very much.
Item six, then, we are informational items. Lori, I assume you handle that?
Yeah, so those information items are located on pages 117 to 134 in your board books. Those include the grants and sponsor contracts for the college in INGREC. I believe Sue Keener sent around to all the board members a bit of an easier to read version. We apologize for that. We had them the wrong way in the board book. Also, page 135 highlights those contracts that are less than 5,000, and page 136 lists the date of our next meeting. It's a sad announcement page. There's one date, June 9th. So are there any questions from the board on those items? If not, I would just like to give the board and the community a really quick update since our last meeting. I think we, the biggest question that we're getting asked every day as we navigate this COVID-19 pandemic is when are we going to reopen? We're seeing a lot of headlines about colleges and universities planning to reopen for the fall, and of course, that is our plan, and of course, it's our hope. Currently, our best guideline is, if you look at the five-phase Restore Illinois Plan, is that at the earliest, they could find us in phase four, which would allow schools to reopen and groups of 50 or more to gather, would be June 26th. And I want to stress, that is the best-case scenario. That's if everything within our healthcare region continues to progress. I think there are some efforts on behalf of our, some of our local elected officials to try to move that along a little bit faster right now. In order to move between phases, it's a 28-day period. They're trying to push that to 14 to try to get us there a little bit faster. But even if we do achieve phase four by June 26th, I do want to just stress, we don't expect to bring everyone back to campus immediately, just as we didn't send everyone home immediately. We are monitoring the situation daily and are working with a team on campus of faculty and managers and others to develop a phased return to campus. So we'll be putting together a return to campus committee, and we'll hopefully have a plan for you at the, or at least an update for you at the June 9th board meeting. I do want to just add that our custodial service did return to campus this week. They're receiving all kinds of training and and have already started the deep clean of our campus using a Virex solvent. Our maintenance staff is scheduled to begin coming back in shifts on Tuesday, May 26th. We're giving them a safety protocol and proper PPE in order to do that. And our goal there is to just kind of start working them through. We've got a lot of empty buildings and a lot of opportunity that we would normally take over the summer months to get some projects done on campus. I think the most important thing this week, we're anxiously anticipating word from Springfield about the state budget. Every indicator is that they're going to vote this week on a state budget, so we will keep the board apprised of that. I think we've heard some, you know, initial scary indications of 30% cuts across the board. We're hoping to see anywhere from level funding to, I think, worst-case scenario I've heard this week is an 8% cut. So we're anxiously awaiting related to that. So once we have guidance this week from the state, we do anticipate finalizing our operations and maintenance budget for the board review as soon as possible. Of course, there's a lot of moving parts, not just the unknowns at the state, but the unknowns with the current enrollment situation. So we're working very hard. The Enrollment Task Force, Brett Delphina Dornas and Laura Enlow have been, have been kicking out marketing and recruitment campaigns every day. So we're doing everything we can to really communicate to our community that, you know, Lewis and Clark represents a valuable savings and is a valuable education, whether we're on campus or online. So Brett, is there anything that you want to add to that in terms of just kind of a campus update for 40,000 feet?
No, other than to stress that we are really working creative, as creatively as possible, to get a wide breadth of advertising campaigns out into the public eye, reminding them that we're here. We're open for business regardless of whether the campus is physically open or not, and that they're a high-quality, low-cost alternative. We're optimistic that we'll be able to pick up enrollments over the summer as people begin to make their decisions exactly where they're going to go in the fall. We hope they're primary choices.
Thank you, Brett. Are there any questions from the board in terms of just the day-to-day on campus right now? It's definitely an interesting environment, for sure. Thank you, Brett. Are there any questions from the board in terms of just the day-to-day on campus right now? It's definitely an interesting environment, for sure. All right. If not, I think that is it for information items. Mr. Hyon, if you.
Looks like Julie has a question, Lori.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
So how did you, how did they complete the classes then for the spring that required some hands-on training? Did, did they get it complete on them, or do you just, are you delaying it till summer, or how did you do that?
And that is, as we discussed, some of our enrollment challenges right now, that is one of the things that is creating potentially a big enrollment problem for us. And we're working with our state legislators, and ICCB is lobbying the state through IDPH as well as through the governor's office. We have not been able to finish the spring semester for those career and technical education students who need hands-on, who need that face-to-face in order to, to advance in the program or graduate. So our goal right now is really working on a strategy to get them on campus safely. We can do that in groups of 10 or fewer. But we've got to get them finished because we can't start new cohorts of students in those programs. We just, you know, obviously, we don't want to enroll students with an expectation they're going to be able to complete a hands-on portion of their course that we just know right now may not happen. So that is our biggest challenge right now. It's something that every week on the Illinois Community College Presidents' Council, it's discussed. It's, it's being lobbied for. As Brett and I talk with our local officials, they, they're aware of that challenge for us. You know, we're, we're trying to get first responders out there, too. You know, our nursing students, our EMS students, our fire science students. So I know our fac, a lot of our faculty are anxious to get back and get those students through, so.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. I just, I thought I had read that, but I just wanted to make sure. So that sounds like a good approach. Thank you for all you're doing, Lori.
Thank you.
And Brett.
Mr. Hyon, I think the discussion items are next, and if you don't mind, I'll just move into the construction status report. It's on page 137 of your board book. I just want to update, since we printed this book, the Capital Development Board did notify us this week that they're going to start moving forward again on projects. So we should see bids for the main complex here shortly, and some movement on our other waterproofing project. And I also just want to mention that we are able to move forward with the Scott Bibb Center Solar Installation Project. It was funded through IGEN and approved last month. Wegman started on that project this week, and we do anticipate that the project will be completed by June 30th. So this will, this will provide a 10 KW solar panel system there on the rooftop of Scott Bibb. So any questions on the construction status report?
I have a question on the, our big project, our big $40 million project. How would you characterize the status of that?
Sorry. So we actually had a call the other day with, with the President's Council, and they're still adding to that list at the state level. So I don't have a good feeling on that. I will say that DCEO today announced $25 million in project funding that's, that they want to award to, to people who are shovel-ready, people with plans. So we've got a few ideas. We're going to try to push forward there, but the latest on the 37 million, 37 and a half million for the main complex, I have not heard. The only thing I've been told on that is that the state, the state's plans to fund that involves selling of bonds, and that, and the selling of those bonds has not taken place yet. So I don't anticipate it being anytime soon, but I have heard nothing to say that it's still not going to move forward regardless of, of COVID, so. I will just add that we, you know, we're, we have heard from our elected official on our appropriations for both IGEN and both, and INGREG, that those, those items are in the budget for now, and we'll hope, hope they can stay there, so.
If no further questions, you want to address you under seven? Lori?
Oh, sure. Um, are you talking about FabLab? Sorry. I've lost my place. So I think Dr. Sue Sierwinski has joined us, and I just want to give a huge shout out to her and Tom Witten. Tom is our FabLab manager, and I believe I did see he was logged on as well. They got really creative during this pandemic, and those of, those of you who know Dr. Sue know that she's never one to enjoy idle time. So during this pandemic, in addition to providing leadership to her career in technical faculty and students, she's been working with FabLab manager, Tom Witten, to produce some PPE equipment for our district's first responder. So Sue, would you like to tell us about the, the latest and greatest that's coming out of the FabLab?
Sure. So I know it's hard to see, but this is what a frame looks like for these face masks. And this, along with a clear transparency that you three-hole punch snaps on, you didn't know you were going to get show and tell. Along with a little, a little show and tell along with the meeting, but it three-hole punches simply, it becomes a facial. And so these have been used by hospital members, nurses, firemen, policemen, public works. So we have been able to, Tom, I give Tom all the credit for tweaking and, and designing this. We can print, between the four printers, we can print eight and two and a half, and two and a half hours. And so we were able to so far donate over 400 of these, and through some donations, they cost us less than probably 15 cents a piece to, to create. And the hospitals love them. Everywhere we've donated them, loved them. And then the second thing we were able to make are these little clips. And for anybody who is worn a face mask for a while, it starts to hurt your ears, and in the back of your head, the face mask in. And so it takes it off your ears in a lot less pressure. So again, nurses. First responders love the idea. I think every county but Calhoun in our district. Any questions?
Does Tom want to add anything? I think I saw him on.
Yeah, yeah. Tom.
There we go. I figured it out. Yes, I just want to say it's an honor to be able to help as much as we did for as low a cost as we did. Wait, I guess I'll do this. Hang on. Show and tell. Is my camera on? No, it's not. But anyway, we, we have a 3D printing these, like, that go out of style. You know, we're just stuck here at home. I'll do something that's really great for our, sort of a morale. So.
We appreciate both of you and, and the effort that you guys have put into this. I, I think they had 3D printers running side-by-side in their living rooms, and Sue's been running all over town to deliver, so thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, guys, for supporting us.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you all.
What I, I like, I like this sort of thing because it, it gets Lewis &amp; Clark out in front of people in a kind of a special way. And when we get behind, get beyond this COVID-19 thing, I hope we can do more things like that where we can show the community how valuable Lewis &amp; Clark is to the, to the community.
Absolutely, Kevin. We agree. We, we think this is, you know, it's great for the community, but it's also great for Lewis &amp; Clark and for the FabLab. And, you know, it's just, I mean, it's just a little window into the opportunities that we have.
I think we're moving on to action items now. Mr. Hyon.
Okay. Under action items, V, we need a motion to, for the approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. Have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussions?
Ready for roll?
Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Item W, inland rivers, ports, and terminals. Enter governmental agreement. A motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Need a second. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Hyon, can I just add, these next seven items are annual leases, and I just wanted to make the board aware that they have been reviewed by legal counsel and by our insurance. So you'll be asked to vote on each one of them individually, but if you have questions, please, please feel free to ask. I'll be happy to answer.
No discussion. Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Item X, lease agreement with Illinois Humanities. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Next, item Y, memorandum of understanding with University of Illinois. Illinois Sustainable Technology Center Haskell Hall Space Renewal Mobile Units. No, that's it. Okay. A motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yeah.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Item Z, mobile unit storage lease agreement. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Next, item AA, Trio Educational Opportunity Center. Motion to approve that lease.
So move.
Brenda approves or makes the motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item AB, renewal of Pride Incorporated. Lewis &amp; Clark Community College Office Lease Agreement. A motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Made the motion. Dwight, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Item AC, renewal of River Bend Growth Association. Lease agreement. A motion to approve.
So move.
Check approved. Second.
Second.
Brenda, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Item AD, new AAS degrees, medical laboratory technician and surgical technician. A motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Bob made the motion. Brenda, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
AA Rank and Promotion Committee Recommendation. A motion to approve.
So move.
Brenda, second.
Second.
Second, Dwight. Any discussion? Or Lori, or anyone needs to, any input on that?
I, I believe Dr. Linda Chapman usually presents this item. Linda, is there anything you want to say about our fine faculty?
I just want to say that all of them have met their qualifications, and their peers have supported their, their proposals for promotion. I strongly recommend this.
Okay. Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 20-8, annual inter-fund transfer.
So move.
Brenda made the motion. Second.
Second.
Dwight. Any discussion?
What was the motion again?
Resolution 20-8.
Which is what?
Annual inter-fund transfer.
Okay. Thank you.
No discussion. Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
AG, resolution 20-9, Working Cash Transfer Education Fund on page 28. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Brenda, second. Any discussion?
Yes, Chairman, I have a question.
Okay.
What was our, what did this amount to last year? Did we do this last year, and what was the amount?
We did do this last year, and it's the exact same amount. Okay.
And that's because we haven't received our tax revenues, right?
Correct. And 50% of the 19 levy goes into fiscal year '20.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Handfelder.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Item AH, resolution 20-10, Working Cash Transfer Operation and Maintenance Fund, page 229. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Bob, first, and Dwight, second. Any comments?
I have the same question, Mary. What, what was it last year?
Same amount.
Okay.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Brett.
Yes. Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyam?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Item AI, CARES Act Funding Distribution Plan for Lewis and Clark Students, page 230, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Brenda, second?
Second.
Chuck? Any discussion, Lori, do you need to insert anything?
I would just add, we are finalizing our total number of eligible students. As you'll recall, we have over a million dollars that has to be distributed directly to these students. Right now, based on the DOE's eligibility requirements, we've identified 838 students. There's 412 part-time and 426 full-time. So based on that, we're looking at about an $800 award toward all of our part-time eligible students and a $1,600 award to our full-time students. There will be no application process and as soon as we have approval, we'll work to start notifying students as to when they could, when they'll be receiving these funds.
Is this where I read that we had 700 students that did not do the FAFSA?
That's correct, we did make, we made an attempt to reach out to all of those students who have not completed a FAFSA for various reasons. 700 was a shockingly large number and a surprise to us. I don't have the total numbers, I know some of them have completed. We did set aside some limited funding from this $1 million for those who may have missed that deadline and will be able to identify them and work with them through financial aid, but yes, and, and the FAFSA is, is the biggest requirement set by the Department of Education for students to be eligible.
Can you say those numbers again, how many part-time and how much each one will get?
412 part-time students, we're looking at about $800. 426 full-time students will receive $1,600. A substantial amount of money that, you know, I'm sure will be put to good use by these students, maybe to re-enroll.
How, how have we reached out to the people, to the students that did not do the FAFSA because their financial condition could have changed drastically from last year?
Absolutely, there were multiple efforts made via email from our financial aid office, our financial aid advisors. And Brett, help me out, I know we've talked about this. They received any text messages, but we did put out some communications. And other, like a blank, but.
We sent out an emergency alert, using our alert system, to all students in that list, telling them to look for the email that encouraged them to apply for the FAFSA.
Yeah.
Point out though too, that, you know, while it doesn't address the inability for people who didn't complete the FAFSA now, moving forward, the state of Illinois is going to require the completion of the FAFSA whilst students are enrolled in high school. So this will become less of an issue moving forward because people will be doing it as part of their high school curriculum. But right now, we feel very strongly that we reached out in every way we could to get ahold of those people that had not filled out a FAFSA and gave them a window of opportunity to do. And as Lori said, we did reserve some that didn't, you know, some portion of the funds in a small set aside so that if we missed people, they will be able to still, you know, benefit from the fund.
The really unfortunate thing, Kevin, to your point, is the FAFSA is a barrier, it's, you know, it's a, it's this daunting task, especially for first-generation college students. So it, it, you know, not filling one out, you know, is, is another barrier here in this instance too. So I know that our financial aid office, they, they host workshops annually to help families and individuals complete that FAFSA. But it, you know, it's, it's a long form and it's overwhelming for a lot of, of first-time college students for sure. But without it, there is no, you know, find, there's no financial aid award, no student loans, so.
How and when do we know that they didn't do the FAFSA?
We just, we don't, we know they didn't do the FAFSA because we don't have it on file. When they complete the FAFSA, they list Lewis and Clark as one of their institutions and we'll, we'll get a copy of it on file and attach it to their record.
Okay, well ideally, the FAFSA is done like in January, right? Or, or earlier, it opens up in October of every year, so they can complete it after any time of October 1, so yeah. October, November, December, and January are peak times for filling it out. Yeah. So we, does it, am I correct in saying that, that we really have never had any formal procedure for reaching out to students that didn't do FAFSA?
No, I couldn't speak to that, I don't know if Angela Weaver's on, on.
I don't think, I don't think she is.
I, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I can follow up with Angela to ask and inquire about that, but I agree, I think that's something that we've realized in this process, while responding to this opportunity for the CARES Act, that we realized we didn't have a process in place that went out and tried to make sure that people applied. Now, keep in mind, if, if you feel that you, 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 you have the, the funds or the wherewithal to pay out of pocket for your college experience, you may feel that there's no need for you to fill out the FAFSA. So, you know, there may be justification or reason in your mind why you'd like it not to fill out the FAFSA, and we don't know what those motivations may have been for that list of 700. Yeah.
And Kevin, oh, go ahead, Kevin, I was gonna say, Kevin, I would just add to that, that, you know, all of our new full-time students go through, go through an orientation, and as part of that orientation, Angela Weaver or somebody from financial aid does come and talk about, and you know, kind of walk them through and connects them to their financial aid advisor, how they can complete that. There's also numerous opportunities when we do our discover days where they provide information about how they'll assist completing the FAFSA. So, I mean, they do, they do get it out there as much as possible, it's a free service that we've always provided. We will sit down with parents and/or the student and walk them through on how to complete it, so.
Any other comments? Rule call.
Britt?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyam?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
The item AJ has been a request from administration to table this till next month.
Yes, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, I?
I.
Okay, now we'll move on to AK. Approval of a 51, one-year administrative contracts effective July 1, 2020, contracts are posted on the website of the college. Is there a motion to approve AK?
Motion.
Kevin, is there a second? Is there a second? Dwight, do you second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Britt?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyam?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Watson, sorry.
Yes.
Item AL, Approval of Resolution 20 dash 11, Authorizing Reduction in Force and Honorable, Honorable Dismissal of Part-Time Staff, is there a motion to approve that?
I did, I did want to note that there was a typographical error on that, where it said March 2021. So that is corrected on the final one, and there was also a name that was left on the list that should have been removed. So you all have received an updated one from what was published.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Moved.
Chuck, second?
Second.
Brett, is that Bob?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hyam, could I just add a statement regarding this action? I just wanted to say that for the last two months, you know, the college has continued to pay all employees across the board, including these part-time and per diem, short-term employees, regardless of their ability to work remotely. And at the time that the campus closed in mid-March, there was really no way of telling how long this pandemic may have gone on or any degree of certainty regarding when any of us would be able to return to campus. And although we appear to be edging closer to that return slowly, it seems that it will most likely be some type of phased-in approach, as I mentioned earlier. With the spring academic semester ending, the college obviously has been forced to make this difficult decision. Our part, part-time employees who are able to work remotely have been identified and we will continue to be able to work and they will continue to log their hours on a time sheet beginning June 1st. However, those employees who have been identified on this list through consultation with managers across campus as being unable to work remotely are being recommended to the board for layoffs, so this is 53 total employees. And I know you can see that list in your board packet, and I just want to say, on behalf of administration, we're very grateful to the board for its leadership and commitment and continuing to pay these individuals for the, over the last two months throughout the semester, regardless of their ability to work. So following any board action here, we of course will notify all of these employees, and this action would be effective June 1.
Any other?
Could you summarize, I can kind of tell by looking at the job titles, but it looks like most of the people are people who would be interacting with the public and doing things.
Right.
With groups, can, can you tell me how these were selected?
Sure, so these, these individuals represent part-time, usually per diem employees. Some of these individuals may not necessarily be expected to work over the summer, but the majority of this list are catering assistants, so obviously we can't hold any functions on campus. And we have been paying them their regular, based on a formula of their normal hours worked over these past two months, regardless of the ability to have events. Same with swim instructors, lab assistants, same with our campus events facilitators and lifeguards. I think that pretty much summarizes these part-time employees that we're looking at here.
To add, to add to that, I, I think, you know, the, the part-time employees that are continuing on and aren't subject to this layoff would be, as Lori mentioned, part-time employees who can continue to complete their work remotely and are part-time employees who are expected to work. There are a number of part-time employees who are not a part of this layoff notice because of the fact that they are not expected to work during the summer months typically as part of their work responsibilities.
So would we anticipate that it would not be until phase four or possibly five that many of these people could be rehired because the campus will not be able to do the, all these large events due to governor's orders?
Right, it would be, I mean, obviously phase four at the earliest, and depending on, you know, when we get some sort of indication where we can reopen our pool, that would obviously mean mean the most, or to, to the most on this group in terms of our lifeguards and our swim instructors. So we've got to get to a point where we can have events on campus again, and obviously phase four just allows for events of 50 or fewer. Assuming we can continue to cater those events, we would obviously need staff to help us come back and, and work some of those smaller events. But not really until we're in phase five would we expect to be holding our larger events and receptions again on campus.
This is another situation where the governor's orders have affected all these people here at the campus because these events can't be held.
Would you characterize these people as, you've used the term per diem, but would it be correct to say they're hourly paid people?
Correct, correct. A lot of the, some of these positions, I'll use the example of our campus events facilitators, they're not necessarily guaranteed a certain number of hours a week. It's based on the number of events we might have scheduled in any given time period, so same would go for obviously swim instructors and lifeguards. It's based on enrollment and, and based on our build, you know, our ability to provide those classes and instruction.
Can you think of other situations where we've had these people unable, they're unable to work, they're hours, but yet we've continued to pay them?
You mean outside of a part-time status?
No, I'm thinking of, trying to think of a situation, I'm not sure what I can, I mean, maybe some sort of a natural disaster or something has happened in the kitchen or something.
Yeah, no, Gabe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say this has been rather unique. At the beginning of this, the Illinois Community College Board, you know, through the governor's office was, was encouraging everyone to, to try to keep as many people as possible employed. And, you know, we, obviously we didn't know we'd be here at the end of, I guess, middle of May, you know, still not able to return to campus. So I don't think the intent was that this would be such a long period of time without expecting people to, to work. So it's where we find ourselves today though, and it, you know, we've gotten through the spring semester. I think that's very admirable for the, for the college and for the board to have been able to pay these individuals for that time period. But I, I don't think there's an expectation beyond May that we can continue to, to pay everyone who can't work.
From a payroll standpoint, I can tell you that we've never processed payroll for people who had not completed time sheets or were part of salary. We've never had to average pay over a period of time and compensate someone in that way. So this is unique and a, a first for us.
And, and kudos to Mary and Cindy and her staff because we, they really did reinvent the wheel here to, to make sure these individuals were paid on a, on a fair formula.
It, it makes me wonder if maybe we should have some sort of a written policy to cover this sort of situation. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against the paying those people, but I think it would have been good to have a policy that would have been pre-approved by the board.
Absolutely, and I think at the beginning of this, Gabe and I even actually discussed some drafts of such a policy, so we'll, we will absolutely take note of that and think about how we can put something into place as we move forward, not to say this won't happen again.
Well, how would you characterize the amount of savings that we'll be seeing for the next few months?
Mary, have you done any calculations? I know we were talking, it's, it's rather minimum, a lot of these are, you know, are lower wage positions. But I don't know if you've done any calculations on, on this particular group, Mary?
No, I, I have not. I would expect that the number isn't really large.
Yeah, I, I didn't know, Mary, if you knew what the total part-time payroll was, I know at one point we discussed that, this obviously isn't all of that. Do you, do you recall that?
No, I don't, no.
It's 50 people, right, 50 people?
53 in total.
You want to say 50 people and, and halftime would be 20 hours, that'd be 1,000 hours, and if we're all getting like minimum wage, that's $10, so it's 10,000 a week, something like that, maybe?
But they wouldn't work 20 hours.
You wouldn't have used that figure, huh? No, that, a lot of these positions would, would be, you know, in the, maybe five to eight hours a week. That, the, the only consistent part-time positions that we have in, in the 53 would be our lab assistants. We have a chemistry assistant and a biology lab assistant, a couple of campus facilitators and some food service assistants. So out of that 53, you're looking at probably maybe a fifth of them who are actually permanent, part, what we would consider more permanent part-time positions. The rest are really just on an, an as-needs, kind of as Lori had mentioned, dependent upon winning classes, the need there, or a number of events that are happening, number of events that need to be catered, that type of thing. So the hours are, on average, far less than 20. You know, probably closer when you take this whole group to, you know, maybe in the 10 to 15 range really. Just off the top of my head. Okay, so I'm probably thinking about $3,000 to $5,000 a week, okay, close enough.
Roll call.
Britt?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyam?
Yes.
Johnson?
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Our next item will be a motion to adjourn, but to announce to the people who are listening in, when we return to open session, there will be no action taken. We'll just adjourn. Is that correct, Dennis?
The next item will be a motion to go into executive session for the second time. And then you're correct, Chairman, that when we adjourn from executive session and back into open session, we'll be directly adjourning the meeting and there'll be no action taken.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion.
Motion made. Here's Second.
Second.
Chuck, Second. Roll call.
Yeah.
Okay.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
All right. I just want to be clear. Are we moving the same group into the executive session as we did last time?
Yes.
All right. I'll open all rooms. You should all, yeah, you should all get your, your invite over. All right, public, thank you for coming. We'll see you when we come out.
You may still have to move Chuck. Brett, I don't have anything to show that I'm leaving the session. Oh, here we go. Okay.
Should, should be coming.
Okay, here we're going to executive session, right?
Correct. You got it.
All right.
Hi Brett.
Hello. How you doing, Auntie?
I'm good.
I'm, I'm going to be leaving, so I can-
All right. I got to make sure everybody gets where they're supposed to be.
Okay, bye.
Bye, see ya.
Brett, you're muted.
I thought I left you for a minute. I was coming out looking for you. I noticed you're not joined, so I'm going to try and move you in again. Oh, well, do you have one that says join executive session? It looks like you might have your invite already.
No, I, I don't. I have, what's on there is leave the meeting. That's what came back on now.
Ah, shoot, that's not, you don't, you don't want to do that.
Well, 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 that'll be leaving the regular meeting, won't it?
Yeah, well, yeah, it'll push you out. It, they'll probably push you out. You'd have to come in through the link again. I'm trying to get you to executive session, but, but it won't allow, let me see here. It says that you have an invite. Does it not say, are you not seeing anything about joining the-
No. If I leave this, maybe I'll see an invite. You think I-
Well, if you do, if, well, that's, that's a possibility. It's also a possibility that it might kick you out of the meeting completely. If that happens, just come back in and I'll let you in.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave this and see what happens.
All right, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Hey, Lee.
Angela, this is Brett. Just, you came in late, so I want to make sure you understand what's happening. We are going into executive session and when they come back out, no further action will be taken. So they'll come out and they'll adjourn. All right, here's David.
It's the same.
All right, let me see if I can kick you over. There you go.
I've got it now, join, okay.
All right, there you go. We got this figured out. So, so Angela, there won't be any further action. I, I can't see or hear you, but I just wanted to let you know that we'll be going into executive session. Then we'll come back and adjourn immediately. There won't be any other action items tonight.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
From this session?
You have to adjourn the open session, right?
Yeah. I thought there'd be more people waiting.
You.
Okay, is everybody here? Yes, everybody's here. You want to do a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Julie.
My second motion.
Okay. Oh, actually, we're resuming open meeting.
Yeah.
Is that okay? I'm sorry.
I think you have to do a roll call again, don't we?
Yes, we do. Sorry. So this is to, to open, to resume the open meeting. Everybody okay? Okay. Britt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Rust? Hanfelder?
Here.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Now, the board can just declare it adjourned if you'd like.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all.